Well.
You want me to leave?
You don't have to leave, you're welcome to stay in the open meeting.
Like not sitting here though, obviously, right?
Alright, it happens.
Motion to approve.
No, motion to end their contract.
Thank you.
Alright, everybody.
Hospital rail lines.
I, I take it you landed safely?
Ha, yeah, I landed, I, because I didn't take off, so.
Oh, no. Too much turbulence?
No, no, I forgot an important element of my safety.
Oh, no.
And I said, well, I'll do this tomorrow.
There you go.
Yeah.
No, not reconvene, the word, the word we used was. Alright, I think I got it all, Joanne. Alright, you're welcome. Alright, so, let's see, we got meeting minutes, oh boy, we've got a lot of meetings. This is a warrant, that's a warrant. This is special town meeting, I don't think that this one. Please. Yeah, special town meeting, oh.
Yeah. Hey, they doing good, we don't, I'm doing alright.
So these. I think, Joanne, do these, these need to be separate, I think, right, the executive session and the regular session from the thirteen?
Aren't they?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just the motion in and the motion out, sorry, I got it, I apologize, my bad. Yeah, let me just do it quick. Alright, um. Motion to approve the select board meeting minutes from December twentieth, um, thirteenth.
January thirteenth.
Yeah, sorry, January thirteenth, um, February third, February tenth. As written.
Certainly.
Um, discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, um, the motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes from January thirteenth, um, as written.
Second.
Any discussion, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, any audience participation? Public comment? Alright, alright, let me just throw this back. Um, highway departments. Ray and or John Cameron. Do you guys have anything to report?
Everything was good.
Spit it out, John Cameron.
I, I just have a question, but it really has nothing to do with the highway department. But why is all town vehicles lettered? That have blue plates, including the pickup that sits out front, which is barely used, and I know you're getting rid of. But the water, the water department doesn't have their trucks all lettered.
They got one of them lettered.
In six months, the other one hasn't gotten lettered.
Well, that's up to them.
Really?
That one comes out of their pocket.
Uh, I don't know, Rainy, that's the first I've heard of it. So it's not identified as the water department truck at all?
Nope. No identification whatsoever.
Yeah, that probably is.
It's got a blue plate on it?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, huh.
Yeah, we can talk about that, um, with water and see, ask them to get a price for that.
That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, price about. Water truck, how did the, um, repair go on Huntington Road, I know that you guys had to make an emergency repair with the gravel?
Ray there?
Yeah. The, uh, the repair went well on Huntington, we got, uh, fifteen loads of, uh. Stone delivered. From Tonolino, that was nice, he ended up dedicating some trucks right away, there's towns all over that got washed out. And he ended up getting us enough trucks where we actually got to fix, fix the road all the way through. Um, it was bad, I mean, very bad, all the way to basically hate, going to the end of hate. The loggers going down into the Huntington, I think that's Huntington watershed.
Is it logging?
Russell, Russell watershed, down in there, they're dropping down over that hill, right at the triangle, and from there, taking that left down into the triangle, that's where it's all getting chewed out. But everything past that triangle going up towards hate.
Yeah.
Um, it was fine, it was perfect up there.
Do we know if they're gonna still be logging?
They could be out there right now even, or.
Okay.
Honestly, I would hope that they would have had the sense of, hey, our trucks are actually sinking in the mud, because we had at least like eight inch, twelve inch ruts going through the whole road. And I, I don't understand why you wouldn't have stopped on the first load, you can tell that they ran multiple loads up that road, just tearing it apart.
Don't they have to fill something out for them?
Big bonds on there.
Yeah, that's what Ray, Rainy was talking about, the, we actually retracted that.
If we had the bonding system, that honestly would have saved us right there and not cost taxpayers that money.
So the problem with the bonding system was when we went to try and enforce it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we had voted and approved it, and then when we were trying to enforce it with Springfield water, it became an issue because we had to have, it required such a detailed, um.
Contract.
Like us knowing exactly what condition the road was in prior to their work.
So wait, Springfield water wanted us to end up?
Yeah, for when you're logging.
No, we had agreed, the town had voted, yes, we're gonna do, I think it was a million dollar bond on the roads, and then, so Springfield water came back and they said, okay, we're gonna start doing work. Um, and we see that you've done a bond, um, we need to know exactly what condition the road is in, um, and we didn't have the ability to provide that information, whether it be. I don't even know, like how you would do that, the data that you would have to have.
Broke.
Yeah, they have to photograph it.
Rainy, did you have something to add, sorry?
Yes, um, since, uh, I had learned that, uh, legal counsel said that we couldn't apply it with the terminologies in the situation, um. I've reached out to a number of towns that are, I'm trying to get their bond program, so that we can get the proper wordage, because Springfield water, well, let's put it bluntly. They throw their weight around, but not, not often are they very accurate and truthful as to what situation is. Legal, I'm sure, said it, because we don't have certain specifics, but I'm trying to find out with Ray, what the other bond policies in the other towns, as to their, their wordage, and basically, from what I've told, was. Prior to your mud season, you take the photographs of the roads, and you just store the photographs, and if they are going down them, and that road is disturbed beyond the photographs, they're liable.
Does it become, I'm just wondering if it becomes like something that is often goes to court and it's sort of battled, or?
Well, if they, you see, the situation is, is if you get the road bond, they have to post a road bond prior to them doing it. It doesn't cost them a million dollars, it costs them a few hundred dollars, but it's basically, if a guy's gonna take a bond and he's gonna be liable for, say, twenty-five thousand dollars on a road, he pays attention. That's the beauty of them, is ninety percent of the guys will not abuse the road if they have a bond posted.
So at this point, do we have any authority to say that their logging trucks can't be on that road?
You can put, you can put a sign up saying, close to trucks over X amount of tonnage through mud season, but again, you have to be there, catch them, have an officer be there, and catch them in the act to do it. If you have companies that turn around and are saying that they're having a logging plan done, they have to post a bond and they'll pay attention. The whole problem there is unless you're gonna have somebody staffed at the road every day during mud season, it's pretty hard to deal with. But if you know the companies that are going in and out of there, you have a road bond, and the whole thing about having a road bond is the town doesn't have the road bond, it has a road bond policy, they have to post the bonds.
Yeah, now, we also have a problem with Buell Land Road.
Yes.
Uh, Ray and the crew went out there to work on it a little bit to try and get it graded, but the roads, the road's pretty well shot now. And by the time they're done logging and we get this bond issue squared away, they're probably done logging for the next forty years.
Well, the, that's the whole situation is, is you gotta get a road bond in place, it's not gonna correct previous practices, and it's not gonna necessarily solve the situation in the next month or two. But next year, you'll have something established, so the town isn't spending money fixing a road when somebody else came in, made a profit, and leaves the road in a poor condition.
So is there anything we can do in the meantime to make sure that if they're continuing to log on, on those roads? That we, since we just spent a good deal of money on Huntington Road, is there anything we can do in the meantime to stop further damage?
We can post signs and hope they, uh, abide by it.
Okay, I mean, I think we might as well post some signs, okay.
Do we own the signs?
No, we'll have to have them.
Yeah, we'll have to have them made, because you have to be specific as far as, uh, vehicle tonnages, you cannot, you cannot make. Like oil trucks, propane deliveries, stuff like this, you cannot make them on that, they have to be commercial, profit, not supportive of residents.
Not a public utility.
Um, so Ray, if you can work on that, um, where, wherever we get signs from, I'm sure Rainy knows, um.
He goes.
Some signs made up.
Okay.
For Buell Land and.
Buell Land.
Yeah, and Huntington.
Is there any other, I don't, you know, that they're logging off of South.
You have, right now.
Your street too?
Huh?
Aren't they working on the end of your street?
I hope they're not.
No.
Heard they were gonna.
We should have at least a dozen on hand, because you should post them on Blair, Ibs, uh, Old Chester, um, Huntington.
Even Nybrook, uh.
Nybrook, yes.
Pretty deal with the truck that came down there, he ran the stop sign right over and kept going, and I don't know French, but he spoke French very fluently, and. I don't know what he was saying, but he had no idea he ran the stop sign over, because they're logging right where the red schoolhouse is before the ski area.
So let's ask real quick, don't they have to fill out a, a form with conservation for logging?
Well, yeah, they have.
We got Dick here right now, uh, Rainy.
Their cutting plan approved by the state.
So we should know which companies are logging.
That, that cutting plan comes to the conservation department, so we see it, and I, I normally forward it like to Rainy.
Okay, okay.
So, so it's a heads up, it, it's two phases, we get, we get a copy of the plan when it's filed.
Yeah.
And we get a copy of it when it's approved by the state of Orstor.
Okay.
And then, and that from Dick is very helpful for us to watch out for it, but if we don't have a road bond in the place of the town, you're just asking them, hey, let's be nice and hope they abide by it.
Right.
Like, they're not gonna pick and choose to come through when it's frost on the road, if, if they got twenty thousand dollars of logs in the woods, they want the twenty thousand dollar logs out of the woods. They're running it all throughout the day, and you're just making soup, you're just chowing the road up, getting worse, but hey, he just made all that money, what does he care, he's already, you know, out of town.
Um, so yeah, let's do a do, a dozen signs or so, Rainy said, we'll just use every year, we'll post them around mud season.
I think most of the dirt would be good to do that, honestly, there's a lot of them.
Okay, and then if we figure out which logging company it is, um, we can always send something out.
Can we team up, Dick, on that?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, alright, thank you guys, alright, Christina, what do you got?
Are we all good?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, okay, so we had a meeting, uh, legal in City Point, the owner's project manager, for the fire department, I'm meeting with them last week, and. As far as owner of project manager services, they're sort of on a soft pause. We need them because of the cost of the project legally, they're, they're still our O, OPM, but what we're doing in the meantime is, we are going to, I reached out to Weston and Sampson, that's the designer. For a contract amendment to include a light feasibility study, so not a full-blown feasibility study, just bare bones, very basic feasibility study. On the possibility of using the town hall gymnasium as a last possible site review before moving forward.
Okay.
Once we hear back from Weston and Sampson, uh, we will then. We'll sit down and go over the contract amendment with Weston and Sampson, then we'll have to touch base again with the OPM and go from there, we're trying to keep costs low.
Yeah.
Um, but investigate every site possible.
Okay.
So Christina, they just responded, I don't know if you saw it.
I didn't, no.
So they're looking at a two-phase process, one to do, um, and then, there's no dollar amount allocated, it's for two, one to see if it's by code things that could be done.
Okay.
Second one is doing feasibility, but what we really need to do, three, is you're the ones who have to approve the contract, is. Are you willing to go forth and put anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars into looking and seeing if this building can be used for a fire station?
I think, I think it's really worth it if we're gonna end up saving money in the long run with the roof generator and electric, or combining those costs.
What was, that was said, once you start updating a building up to a certain percentage, right, what was that date?
You don't have to update the entire building, because.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So. OPM couldn't tell us for sure what it'd be, but, um, in discussions with them, it could be as much or more than a new fire station.
I don't believe.
Yeah, but I think so as much or more, but then, the cost includes the roof that this building needs, the electricity that this building needs, so if we include that in with a fire station. Then we're not paying an extra two million dollars for roof, electric, it's all combined, so I think it may, it's gonna have a big price tag, but it's gonna take care of a lot of problems at once.
Well, thanks, but, again, you have to give the okay to go forward looking at the amendment, and if you have to sign that amendment, note too that, when we talk to City Point. Their amendment, to finish up, they're half, the second piece of that, is another hundred and something thousand dollars.
Which is, we're looking at regardless of where.
Well, they're gonna come back supposedly with a better number, but we don't know about that, that's why it's a soft pause for them now.
Okay.
No matter what we do, so if you go forward with this and you're okay with that, then we'll get that contract to you to look at feasibility of this building, but no matter what, you're gonna have to go back to the town meeting to vote for. Because it's another half a million dollars to do the design for the fire station at Salt Shed, it's probably gonna be a half million dollars to do a design here.
So that's the other piece of that, is the only other location we have is the salt shed, so there's a lot of people in town that are very adamant that they want it in the center of town, so I think that we have to move forward with looking at the location here.
I don't think the town wants to lose their hall, a lot of people I talked who said, what, there, that's ridiculous.
Well, it's not losing.
Have you been able to follow up on that property off of twenty-three and North Lampard, no contact with that guy?
There, he's not looking to, the, the, the one that had seven hundred dollars in back taxes or something? Is that the one you were talking about, now that, there's no interest there, unfortunately.
So no one's losing a town hall, though, we, we would be using the gymnasium for town meetings.
Yeah.
Um, and things like the Halloween party and whatnot, would it be available for pickle dog, pickleball, um, no, it would not.
Or it won't be for their exercise classes either.
But we have many other, this size rooms in the building. That we can be using for exercise rooms and stuff, yes, Mary?
So, correct me if I'm wrong, we would put fire trucks in the gym.
It would be.
It would no longer be the gym, it would be a fire station.
Would be a fire station.
So that's where the vehicles would be housed.
Yes, ma'am, correct. If feasible.
And that means the kitchen would have to go.
The kitchen would be relocated.
Exactly, it's still a big expense to move a commercial kitchen.
It's gonna be a big expense to build a fire.
It might be right there too.
That, and that, that, and, uh, that guy that bought the property from Belfort, he had the for sale sign on it, I spoke to you about it, and we can't get in touch with him, or he's just not willing to sell it, or what?
He's not willing to sell, I guess, he, I had luck in the voice.
Come back at all.
No.
Yeah, so this is, as in, two years of research, this is what we have, the salt shed.
And we just need to keep in mind that the cost.
Four years of research.
The cost of building materials and.
Continues to go up.
It's just.
We can keep spinning it in circles, or we can move forward.
So I think realistically after five years, if you wanna look at this as your last option, because the committee already narrowed all the other options down for the salt shed, so if you wanna give the town the potential for an in-town. Location versus salt shed, this, at this point, may be your other option, but again, we don't know until we spend the money to find out, so.
Exactly.
You're okay, if the three of you, or two or three of you are okay with spending that money, then Christina and I can move forward, we're looking at that, getting that amendment for you to feel okay to pay.
I think we, I'm fine with spending five or ten thousand to finish the feasibility study, right? Do we need a vote, though, for that, John?
Did anything ever come about, some of theirs?
Yes, all of that has been vetted and nothing came of it, we looked at many places in the center of town, nothing was, nothing was viable.
Next to the old fire station, they said no.
Yeah.
When we do get to a place of where we really know anything, all of this information is gonna be available for everybody to review and look over, and we're gonna do a, a meeting, in, informational meeting. Before a town meeting to supply everybody with all the information that has been gathered and compiled over the last four or five years.
I think an informational meeting would be good, especially for the salt shed up top.
Yeah.
There could be people that don't exactly know the location exactly, compared to other spots in town, and. It'd be good to have them in person seeing it.
Alright, um, do you need a vote for us to go forward with that, or just that we're amenable?
Probably not until we get the amendment, yeah.
Yeah, because it's hard for you to vote on something you don't know possibly.
Alright, do you have any more, Christina?
I do.
Okay.
Um. Mast D O T submitted bridge inspection reports for Blair Road, Hyrum Blair, and North Lampard Road, they, all three came back as either good or satisfactory, if anybody interested in them, if the reports are here, I can make copies for anybody who wants to see them.
Thank you.
Uh, I had a meeting with Novus today regarding the upgrades that need to be done to IT, and there was some discussion about the server, I know I brought it up to you guys before, our server needs to be replaced. To replace the server on site is twenty thousand dollars, and at the, that point, that was really all the information I had to give you, so there was no decision to be made.
Okay.
Uh, after speaking with Novus today. They could host the server, and it would cost, I just had this all written down. It would cost thirty-six hundred dollars a year to host the server.
Mm-hmm.
Servers are typically good for about eight years, so for thirty-six hundred dollars a year, we'd break even at about six years.
Mm-hmm.
But we wouldn't have to pay for licenses and onsite equipment ma, maintenance, and even save on an electric bill if we allow Novus to host and pay the thirty-six hundred dollars a year, or pay the twenty thousand dollars upfront. Continue to have it here and have to replace it again in eight years.
And this is where we have it, where we have the AC having to run to keep cool.
Yeah, yes.
Oh, it's up here, okay. I mean, if it makes more financial sense to not have it here, is the work time quicker, I would imagine, if it's hosted by them, and they don't have to come up here and fix, or no?
No, I mean, we don't, we haven't had any problems, I think in the past, what the, well, not I think, in the past, what the issue was, with that, the, when town hall had cable broadband internet, it wasn't feasible for them to host it. But now that we have Whip City Fiber, there's more options where servers can be located, and so.
Yeah, I mean, what are your thoughts, Joanne?
Uh, no thoughts, I've had, uh, minor problems with the network dropping as well, or I can't do anything and I have to call them and they fix it, and that's probably where all that is coming from.
Okay.
The server's outdated.
Oh, yeah.
No, I'm not saying it's my fault. I didn't get it right.
You're not outdated, yeah.
Um, okay, do you need a decision on that?
It's not a decision I wanted to make, I wanted to kind of leave it up to you guys.
Okay, but you need a decision on it now? I mean, I don't know, it sounds to me like it makes more sense to have it housed there.
Pros and cons? So, uh, it comes down to price, really, um. To replace the server as is, it's twenty thousand dollars upfront, and it's only good for eight, you shouldn't say, it's, it's not gonna like stop working on year eight to the day, but they really should be replaced every eight years. Uh, there is maintenance with them that we would not have to worry about anymore, and the electricity bill would go down, and we would have to pay for as many licenses as we do.
And they should.
And they should, I mean.
So.
But, of course, on the other end of it, that's a never-ending bill, you know, so the thirty-six a year, thirty-six hundred dollars a year, that's not gonna go away.
We don't own the server, or like, yeah.
But then we also.
But in eight years, you have to reply.
No, that's like one, one for me.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, Rainy, go ahead.
I'm not a resident, but my question would be, so that locked you into a contract with them?
We already are in a contract with them.
But you'd be locked in for how many years with the thirty-six hundred server?
We can only do a contract for three years.
And then we would revisit?
Yes.
And if their prices change?
The contract would outline the prices for three years, and we can only do a contract for three years, so then we renegotiate after that three years.
So after three years, it could go up?
Right, just like everything else.
Well, yes, I know, understand that, but what I'm trying to say is, you have a fixed cost, and now you have a variable cost.
Eight years.
Yeah.
Twenty will be thirty, and.
Right.
Just questioned, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Oh, hi, uh, it's, it's eight years old now. They, yes, eight years old now, it was here before Novus, uh, took us on. Okay, um, what else, oh, water department reached out to me asking for VEDAR training and gave me a quote that they obtained from VEDAR. For training in just their department, and it's seven hundred and ninety dollars, but the VEDAR contract itself, uh, allows for X amount of available training as part of the contract.
Okay.
So I reached out to VEDAR to see what we have, and he got back to me today, actually.
Yeah.
The town has two training sessions remaining, he says there are two half-day sessions from implementation.
Okay.
Said, I understand that the water department requested and received a quote for a day of training, we can use one of the remaining implementation sessions for that training if you'd like. Uh, because of the new personnel and the reading upgrades being performed for the water department.
Okay.
If so, you don't need to accept the quote, um, let me know if you have any questions, or if you'd like to keep the training sessions and accept the additional day quote for the water department office. So, before you make a decision on that, um, Board of Health also needs, uh, login and training, and Joanne, I believe. Also needs training.
There's been very little training.
Town clerk, so there is training that needs to go around, we have this quote that water department got.
But that's for a full day.
That's for a full day, for the water department, if they want to fund their VEDAR training, we still have two days of our own through the contract.
Okay, so yeah, let's have water fund their own, and then let's do, just wanted, sounds like we need an extra half a day even.
Oh, that's it, I'll probably get trained by Sarah.
Okay.
That, oh, I attend. That, oh, I attended an O S D training last Thursday at um. The Furcog for convies, which is actually very helpful. Um, and I'm gonna have them come out and do a training, a more in-depth training here. They were super nice. It was very informative. So that was, that was huge. That was good.
A training for you, just you or for you?
Anybody who wants to um learn about how to purchase off of convies, um, yeah. Or post bids or any of that stuff.
Okay, so water.
Yep, everybody can come. Um, and then that's kind of it for me. I mean, I have a little bit of information to talk about when. Mister Gates comes up, but. That's really kind of it.
Thank you. We have Jonathan here.
Okay, so. Here to talk about two things um related. One is um potential battery storage facilities we have possibly coming to town, which. I think is a pretty good fact that it's gonna happen. Uh, both of the locations are on North Blanford Road, right near the uh high voltage station. It's already there. One, one would be on one side of the road and one would be on the same side of the road. We've had uh a Zoom meeting with one of the developers, uh not a lot of detail. Other than it's a proposed two hundred megawatt facility, which is a pretty large facility. It's a piece of property that does have wetlands on it. And it's fully forested area. And so it would be another sort of deal that the solar projects did where they come in and just blow down everything that's there and. Put in these uh battery storage units, which are similar to like a. A cargo shipping container you see on trucks. You would basically see like a hundred of those out there laid out. So um the other one, on the other side, I'm not exactly sure what the the rating of that would be. They they actually came to the conservation commission looking for approval to put in a temporary access road. On the west side of the substation. It would have gone through the wetlands uh to get to the back uh a piece of that property. Uh, we denied that. We we signed it back and said, you're not giving us enough information about what what the impact is on the wetlands and so forth. And it sooner or later, if you're gonna do this project, you're gonna have to build a ten, a permanent road. And where's that gonna be? So they're gonna be submitting uh what's called a notice of intent, which is a higher level permit application.
What is it called? I'm sorry.
Notice of intent. And I think that it's imminent that we're gonna see that. So, um, pretty sure these things are gonna happen. I mean, this is pretty, pretty big uh. Happening for Blanford, I think. One of the developers is a a national firm that's that has installed these all over the country. The other one, uh that's on the the substation side, it's a smaller firm. Uh, they've set up an L L C in Massachusetts called Blanford Storage L L C. So uh we we expect we're gonna see things uh coming to the conservation commission, looking for review and approval for these. And it's gonna be complicated for us, I'm sure, because there are wetlands on the property and they're probably gonna be. Doing things like filling in wetlands and replicating wetlands in other places and things to like that. The other thing related to this, that's interesting is this the state has passed a bill. For large-scale green energy projects. And what that means is uh the bill is passed in twenty twenty-six. If if they write the regulations by that time, but that's the target. That will remove approvals for these facilities from from towns and cities, basically. They will get one permit from the state. It, but it's good, that's the criteria. It's driven by the size, the the rating of of the facility. And um but even if it's a small facility, like twenty-five megawatt facility. Uh, we would, the the local towns and cities would still do the permitting, but if all the permitting would have to be done within one year. Or they automatically get approval for the project. So there's quite a bit of change coming out of Boston for these. I mean, thi- thi- this is the, what's, it's going on all over the country, I mean. And and again, the theory is that in periods of low electrical demand. Power would be diverted from the grid into these batteries and charge these batteries. And then in periods of high demand, they would be able to tap into into that to put, put it back into the grid.
And they'll be sure to keep our prices down, I'm sure.
I get asked all the time, what's in it for Blanford? I have no answer.
Is that the same kind of batteries they're fighting in Westfield?
Yes.
Well, I was gonna bring that up. These are lithium ion batteries. And I mean, there's, there was a horrendous fire at a facility in California a couple of weeks ago. Um, Westfield has got a lot of uh lot going on related to the facility that's proposed for there. Which is right on what's called the Barnes Act, which we're down there by by the airport. Um, so I I mean, I think we all have seen the videos about what happens when a cellphone battery goes through about down. Multiply that times. So I I mean, um, and what's interesting for these two locations. Is it, it's, it's within the Springfield Water and Sewers watershed. Uh, Badlem Brook goes right near all these, which which is a direct contributor to Kala Mountain Reservoir. So they're, they're fairly interested in how this plays out uh in terms of protection.
So what the land is owned by these LLCs?
Um, no, the the land, well, the land. One of the locations. And the ownership information. And this is the other one. The other, the other one is is the same owner that owns the current solar facility. Uh, Husatonic Solar, they're out of Connecticut. So. I don't know what the timing, I I I haven't been able to determine from talking to these people if they view the new state. Regulatory reform, as they call it, is a plus for them or not, or if they'd rather deal with us.
There's nothing in our bylaws currently that would prohibit it.
Our bylaws were actually amended last year to allow battery storage units. So it doesn't say it can't be done. It just lays out if you do it, this is how you have to do it, basically.
Now, are they gonna own the property or release it?
It's just like the solar projects, TJ, they they sell. Every week, it seems like there's different entities and different owners and it's, it's just.
And that doesn't raise any suspicions. Makes me Brady scared.
Sort of on the side, do you have that position? That position has some availability at Dick's.
Oh, that was the next thing I was gonna bring up. So with all that said, I mean, I, we could foresee. A fair amount of work for the conservation commission, depending on the timing of when these things happen. Uh, our conservation agent, I think everybody knows, resigned and left us in December, Nick. And uh we posted a a a job posting in three newspapers. Uh, in early January, got zero response. And as I was discussing with Christina, I just don't think um with the pay rate we've got. And it it's just not attractive to somebody who's got the qualifications to do the job.
Have we reached out to Pioneer Valley Planning at all to see if they can help us?
Not recently. I did talk about that with Christina the other day as as a possibility.
I think that what we're, we're gonna need is something more permanent. And even then, we would be paying P V P C. I mean, P V P C does these L T As where they'll help us. In the short term with some things, but I think that what Mister Gates is talking about, coming down this pipeline. Ideally, like to have somebody to be dealing with this because you, like you had mentioned, Westfield, they have a lot more resources than we do. And they're trying their best to try and fight it and I don't know that it's going in their favor.
Do, are the, I'm just curious, um, do we know surrounding towns, conservations have agents that we could maybe?
I talked to everybody I can think of, including our circuit writer at Mast D E P that we deal with all the time. He's in touch with all the conservation commissions. He can't come up with somebody that would be interested in Blanford. I mean, and you know, when we hired Nick before, um, he he was also the agent for Beckett. And uh it, we were lucky to get him, uh, cause we had no other interests back then. Other than him and the only reason he was interested, cause he was basically coming this way anyways for Beckett.
I'm wondering if the other hill towns around us are having the same issues with the storage containers and if we can sort of team up.
I don't, I know that there's some, like in Pittsfield and like Westfield, but I don't think so. It's sort of unique because these things need to be near a substation and they need to be. Near the hundred fifteen thousand bolt cross-country lines, which crisscross right up there on North Blanford Road. So we kinda have a unique situation there with access to a substation and and the transmission lines right there. Um, so I I think if you don't have that, they're probably not, not interested. In other locations, that could probably change. And the state recommends that these facilities be installed near solar facilities. But it's not, it's not a requirement. It's a recommendation as I read it. So. That's, that's.
So Boston, what's that for Blanford? Basically.
Well, I thought that what you were saying was that the motion to come through the um. Through Austin was going to be stopping, was gonna be limiting the amount.
So depending on the wattage of the facility, it would still call on Blanford. If it's smaller facility, Blanford would have to be doing permitting. And there's a certain, certain threshold of wattage where the state takes over and they're the ones issuing the permits, whether it be later or not.
I understand.
And if we, if it's a small, we have to do it within.
Keep that if you want. I mean, look at it later, but it kinda lays out. The chart on the second page lays out the, how the new process from work versus the current process. I I mean, and it's interesting, I mean, the, this presentation we got for the one. That the opposite, the the substation. They they seemed very knowledgeable, but eh all the work they've done seems to be more geared to like federal regulations than state. Like the whole presentation never talks once, mentions the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act. Mentions Army Corps of Engineers and all this other, we kinda said, well, this is Massachusetts, you need to. Like. Gear this to the Massachusetts requirements and they're like, oh, yeah, well, yeah. But so anyway, um, I think it's coming. And uh I just think whatever we can do as a town to be prepared for. Collectively is, would be a good thing to try to understand what, if anything, the town gets out of all this.
Maybe, um, are we at a place where we should reach out and ask legal if there's anything that we should be looking at? Implementing to sort of protect us?
And I also thought, I mean, I don't know if you get somebody from the state to come. Like maybe to a selectmen's meeting or whatever, just kinda give us, you know, a few, their view of all this. And I know there's been state people in Westfield presenting information, but I understand. They didn't have a lot of good information.
Most of the people walked out of the meeting. They were so up the bill of the board.
Yeah, you need that we lost uh.
He needs a conservation.
Conservation agent. So the other thing I would mention is we, the conservation commission has the ability. If we, if we think a project is complicated and uh technically complicated, like over, even over our heads. We, we can, we can require what's called a peer review consultant to work on behalf of the town. But even with that, with a project like this, like when we were doing the permitting for the the three solar projects and for Belfleur. There's still a lot of like coordinating and documenting and site visits and. And things like that. And and that's where the the agent comes in. Uh, it it to go out and verify wetland boundaries. It needs to be somebody who understands wetland delineation. And how to determine if the boundaries that they've set up are correct and. Beat the right criteria and so forth. So, so there's quite a bit of legwork to be done when you get into. This scale of a project for this town.
Do you, do you mind if I uh get in contact with uh Pioneer Valley Planning Commission? And uh see what they can do to help us find an agent? Cause I'm on their board, so.
Yeah, I I I, at this point, I'm all ears.
Yeah, I'll make copies of this and I'll, I'll contact uh. Kimberly tomorrow.
We should probably look at what we've budgeted for next year for that position.
It was a five to ten, we posted it for five to ten hours. Between twenty and twenty-five dollars an hour was the. Twenty-three and twenty-five. For five to ten hours a week, which is why it's a hard position to fill, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, if we combine it with other small.
The reality is, the workload is very inconsistent. I mean, what is just sort of normal Blanford kind of makes. But when these things come along, it it the 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 level of effort. Takes off quite a bit.
So, do you think that something like this came along and our agent decided to resign because it's too political?
Could be, could be. I mean, you got a good job working for the state.
All right. Thank you, Beth.
Okay, um, because I'm not familiar with this project. I was just wondering.
I'm sorry, could you just say your name so I can know?
Debbie Lundgren. So where, what are the batteries gonna be used for? Why are they gonna be in Blanford? Where is the energy coming from to go into them? And what's, what is it gonna be used for coming out of that?
Hey, so again, the the theory is that um in Massachusetts. They're, they're, they're pushing green energy projects, which is solar and wind, obviously, not wind here. But there's a number of solar fields in Blanford. So the theory is. In normal energy consumption times, they could divert power off the grid. And charge these batteries.
Not from solar, but from just ever source.
Either or. I mean, there's a, there's an organization called I S O New England. Which sort of controls the power movement all over New England. It's like they open a valve and send more here or whatever there. But, but so again, the theory is. In periods of low power demand, they would take divert power off the grid and charge these batteries. Then say the middle of August, we got ten days of hundred-degree heat and everybody's running their air conditioners and. The power consumption goes way up, they can tap into these batteries and pull it back into the grid.
Or anywhere in the um.
Whoever they wanna send it. Is that, it's your question?
Okay, but it's not, it's not really green energy, but it's um, it's helping. Because solar can only work during the day and they're putting. Energy in at night. Whatever source.
Right.
Um, we've got some warrants to. Oh, why don't we? And then we have Sarah.
Table payroll, please.
Table payroll? All right, we've got a couple warrants to look at.
Water Department.
Water Department.
That's uh the whole thing, the whole shebang. This is wire, um, water to add it in.
So you should only have the one main one that has select board and water.
Yeah.
And then the smaller one is all wired and that is generally, um, the treasurer.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody have a good night.
Alright, um. Alright, so motion to table the um warrant nineteen payroll.
Second.
Any discussion on, on favor?
Aye.
I, motion to approve warrant nineteen um accounts payable. No second. Um, any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so then we've got, um approval for town accountant to pay previous fiscal water bills from the Water Department, yes, sir.
So, one of these days, we're gonna get around to paying the water bills.
Yeah.
Now, everybody has a bad memory about this, but there was a motion a long time ago.
Yeah.
Saying that the accountant should be paying the old water bills, even if they're previous year, because all within this building. And they, everybody agreed to it and now they're saying we don't remember that. So I'm just asking for another motion. Also,
Okay.
Um, a motion was made a long time ago at the same time to have Sarah remove the interest on these said water bills.
Okay.
And nobody can remember that either, so.
So you just need us to.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a banner and put it up after you approve it, please.
Motion to um approve the town count to pay previous fiscal year bills for the Water Department.
Second.
Any discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for the approval for the town treasure to remove interest and penalties from the fiscal year bills from the Water Department.
Bless you.
The session? Aye.
Aye.
Alright, um, we're tabling the Exponentary Court, I like that, and then the Climate Leadership Focus Group. Come on down.
Oh, I actually, I, I'm here to. I just wanted to present the three names that I had and I don't even know, I, I know they're in the uh local paper.
Okay.
They were asking for people to uh call into either the Board of Selectmen or I'm the town administrator, so I don't know where that stands, if you got any. Nothing, but um, I have three names and after the caucus, it seemed like, after going to the caucus, um, last Monday, it seemed like all the commissions and committees and boards are three people, so I'm hoping three people might be enough and I don't know where to go from there. It would be Paul Derschka from Buelen Land Road, Chuck Benson from Hay Road and me from Beach Hill Road.
Okay.
And I don't know where we go from there.
I don't know either. I was just looking at the minutes and it said that we, um, that you were, you signed it. Let me see what we said.
According to the, um, the climate leader, you know, requirements, um, a, a committee can be appointed by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
I don't know if that's all there is to it as far as the town goes.
Yeah, we would need to have a bylaw for the purpose of the, of the committee.
Okay.
And outline their intent, yes, and objectives, which we could do at the annual town meeting.
Okay.
Which would be June second.
Okay, so, um, then that's where we would um get the wording through town council.
Yes.
For what a bylaw would look like, um, and then people would vote on, um, basically the formation of that committee. And then after that vote, I think then we could appoint people, um, the three names. Um, and more people are interested.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that that's our next step. Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Don't want you a little piece of paper.
I didn't know if I had to turn something. Thank you. I think I can remember the names.
You got it.
Just do, really.
Did you get your stuff from the, the COA room, Deb? Or did you get your stuff from COA?
Yes, alright, I have two contracts in front of me that I just wanna make sure before we move on to our exec, other, other executive session.
This one is this is for, um, the Beach Hill Road project, road thing, so uh, it's an amendment, it's just an amendment to the existing contracts.
I'll just sign it now. Okay.
And then that's part of it as well, so that we can get the final payment, um, from the state.
Okay. Uh, yeah, thirty, it's back here, let me see. Um, this is the MIA health benefits.
Oh, yes, there you go. So that's the new, that's the increase in.
Awesome.
Insurance. Insurance, health insurance.
Lovely industry. Okay. Um, so then I will make a motion to go into executive session in accordance with GLC thirty A. Um, with, specifically with the treasurer, um, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, on favor?
Aye.
We'll call vote, Kara says yep.
She says yes, Jeff says yes.
Alright.